Good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and open the meeting tonight. And welcome. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
And Councilmember Pasquale.
Here.
All right, if all can please stand. We're going to have an invocation by Pastor Robert Faschetti, followed by the pledge.
I'd just like to say that I am grateful. Is it? Am I on? Just checking. To be able to get an opportunity, I've been asked more than once to pray, and it might sound redundant. But my heart is to pray that all the decisions made in this room are made with the right intent for our community. And so with your permission, I'm going to pray for you guys. Father, I just thank you because you're ever faithful to us. You do things that just amaze me constantly. And so I pray for these men, the decisions they make, that you would be the one that influences. And if any influence is not of you and not on behalf of the community, that their ears would be shut to it. I thank you for your faithfulness. Amen.
Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a couple of agenda modifications. Mr. Scott Schultz from RWMA, the executive director, is unable to attend this evening. And his presentation, which was item two, will be rescheduled for a later date. And due to unanticipated recusals, items 13 and 14 are being polled from the consent calendar and will be voted on separately. And staff has provided a memo to clarify the consent calendar item seven. Let's see. Hard copies of the memo have been distributed to council and available for the public in the foyer. And at this time, the clerk will read that memo aloud for the record.
Thank you, Mayor. This memo is dated May 6, 2024, from the Human Resources Department regarding the staff report item number seven. The purpose of this memo is to clarify the benefit agreement staff report consent calendar item seven. The staff report did not include the administrative fees for CalPERS retirement. Finance was able to confirm the administrative fee for CalPERS retirement. The current miscellaneous annual expense is $94,374. This update does not affect the recommendation to city council. It should be noted that there's also an administrative fee for the polled safety accounts that is shared among many public agencies.
All right, thank you. Moving on to agenda item one, under ceremonial presentations, Housing Infill Analysis Project, presented by Ashley Patocznik.
Hello, Mayor and members of the city council. Happy to be here tonight, kicking off this meeting with a nice brief, but thorough presentation on the infill housing analysis project that was conducted over the last couple of years in collaboration with SAICOG. Better have this. So a bit of history of this project. In the fall of 2020, in collaboration with SAICOG and through funding provided through the Regional Early Action Planning Grant, we partnered up with the Urban Land Institute on what they call a technical assistance panel. So it's a group of people to analyze a specific development project. And they were looking at infill housing. So that was kind of the first phase. And the second phase of this project was a continuation of that in collaboration with Bay Area Economics, their urban economics firm, as well as in collaboration with SAICOG. In summer of 2023, we did phase two. So first, phase one of the project with the advisory panel. Essentially, what this project was, was to look at infill housing. And this site was selected on Allman Street. It is just west of the old Fremont Hospital to kind of put you in location where we're looking. This is a vacant piece of property. And the panel was analyzing it not only for market and economic analysis, but design and land development. They prepared conceptual designs for this project under the classification of infill housing. So they looked at townhomes, as well as multifamily housing, and then also extending the hospital. So this was very conceptual. And it was in collaboration with the hospital, with Blue Zones, with SAICOG, and with the city of Marysville. They were also looking at an infill housing project over in Marysville. In addition to the conceptual design, they performed a pro forma for development at this location. There's a lot of numbers. But the number that really matters is basically the, they were looking at very high densities for these projects in order to make them get close to penciling. So densities of around 50 units per acre. Currently, our maximum density is 36 units per acre. And even with that increase of housing under the different market rate, rental-only, market rate for sale, townhomes, multifamily, none of them really penciled out. There was a gap in the, you know, a gap. So basically, what they recommended and the takeaways from their analysis was, first, that continuing collaboration and prioritizing what the hospital's needs are are key. And the hospital had mentioned that if they're going to be doing infill housing, the goal was for housing for healthcare workers, which generally is market rate, higher, kind of nicer housing. They also looked at, potentially looking at complementary short-term or rental housing for traveling healthcare workers. But the main takeaway was that the significant gap in financing, even if we were to develop at a very high density. So the advisory panel recommended looking at a different spot. And they recommended a location downtown that might be a good option. So that kind of was phase one. And that kicked us off into the second phase of this infill housing project. And the first piece of that was conducting a housing preference survey. This was in collaboration with SAICOG. And then they partnered up with BAE Urban Economics, as well as Salazar Architects, to take a survey of the, they were looking to take a survey of the three major employees in the Yuba Sutter area. So that's Caltrans District 3, Adventist Health, and then Beal Air Force Base. Beal Air Force decided not to participate in the survey, but they still were able to get a good amount of responses from the people who are working here in Yuba Sutter. And what they found was that people have a strong desire for homeownership versus renting. That's probably pretty obvious. Whoops. But they also noted in the survey what the desired amenities are if people were to relocate to this area. So they were specifically looking at people who do not live here, but come here for work. And things that they were looking for were public safety, housing, and a cost of living that is comparatively affordable, as well as having, you know, public amenities, access to high-quality shopping, parks, et cetera. In addition to that housing survey, they zoomed in to the site that was initially recommended by the Urban Land Institute panel. This is located, I'm not very good at this laser, on Plumas Boulevard and Franklin Avenue. It's south of the Sutter Health kind of medical complex there on Plumas Boulevard. And it is owned by the city. So this is a bit of a unique situation because of the ownership being with the city. So we analyzed what could be done here and what are the feasibilities for development here as well. They looked at two conceptual designs. One was a traditional multifamily apartment design, as you can see here. And this was at a relatively high density as well. And they found a significant financing gap, significant in the tune of $16 million. This is a large gap in order to develop this type of housing on this location. Then they also looked at a lower-density product, single-family townhome style with a shared community space, shared outdoor space. And this was at a density of about 15 dwelling units per acre, which is fairly standard for multifamily housing in Yuba City. They showed us different floor plans for townhomes where you can have a townhome development that kind of looks like single-family housing. So it would maintain that single-family form that we see in a lot of communities in Yuba City while still having the multifamily density that is needed in a lot of places in California and in Yuba City. And they conducted a pro forma. So here's a lot of numbers again. But the main thing to note here is that with the townhome alternative, the gap was significantly lower, closer to about 1.5 million. So that's still a pretty big gap. But it's a bit more attainable than 16 million. And so what they recommended, their key takeaways were that this type of gap, they've seen it done in other jurisdictions where this type of development gap is able to be solved, if that's the word, through creative partnerships and kind of taking the driver's seat and getting out there and looking for development types that really work for our community and work for the needs of the community. And so they recommended doing a request for proposal and request for qualifications process, so seeking out designers and developers for a specific housing type that would work for the community. So at this point, staff is planning to do just that, to carry forward with the next phase of this project, go through with the request for proposals and request for qualifications. And then we'll be coming back to council with what we find next, you know, with how things progress in this project. And I want to take the time to thank SAICOG for their partnership in this. James Corliss is here. He's the executive director of SAICOG. And he would like to speak to the council for a few minutes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, again, thank you so much for engaging in this process. I just, Ashley mentioned partnerships. And I think this whole effort is an excellent example of the kind of partnership that our six-county agency in your city have developed over this in particular. So this whole program is, we'll be able to get the ULI panel that Ashley talked about and all of this work through a lot of our Green Means Go program. For some of you who were there four or five years ago, we actually had to go to the state legislature and really work hard over several years to get that into the budget. We created a program, and you had to compete competitively, actually, across all the six counties to get a lot of these resources and these panels. And because you have an excellent staff, you succeeded. And you competed. Because also, this is such a fantastic community to think about this kind of housing and family-friendly housing and really revitalizing your urban core. So we're really excited about that. I think some of you also know, we took that beyond just the SAICOG competitive funding and Green Means Go. And we wrote you in a recent grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation for Green Means Go. You're one of 10 communities across our region. Winning a U.S. DOT Department of Transportation federal grant is like winning a lottery. And we have just won that grant. So 22.5 million money for Yuba City to continue this kind of work. So again, great partnership, a great way, I think, for you all to, you know, we see you, our job is to put you on the map, the state level and also nationally. And I think we've been able to do that. And then finally, I'll just say, we also are really excited, as the mayor knows, to bring our board meeting here, the whole SAICOG board meeting here in Yuba City on June 20. And we would love to highlight a lot of these efforts and this partnership and the work that you've undertaken. So I just want to say, you've got a great staff. Ashley's done terrific work and really, really happy to have this partnership. And if you have any hard questions, Ashley is happy to answer them.
All right, very good. And she does have her own phone number for Ashley for answers. That's true. All right, you good?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, guys. Number two, as I stated, is going to be delayed to a future council meeting. We're on to number three, Sutter Animal Services Presentation by Megan Anderson.
Good evening, members of the public, mayor, council members. My name is Megan Anderson. I'm the Animal Services Manager at the Sutter Animal Services Authority. So you're going to hear me use the word SASSA quite often tonight. Sutter Animal Services Authority, we call SASSA for short. So SASSA service coverage, that's 608 square miles. So this is our animal intake ranging from 2019 to 2023. The color difference is by jurisdiction. The Sutter Animal Services Authority is a joint powers authority made up of the city of Yuba City, Sutter County, and the city of Live Oak. So that's what those colors demonstrate. What we've been dealing with at our facility is an increase in large dogs, which impacts our capacity to hold animals. So if you've got a lot of small animals, small dogs, you can put more together in a kennel. But when you're receiving more large dogs, we have to keep them separate, and it impacts our shelter more. So live releases, those usually correlate with animal intake. But live releases include return to owners, adoptions, rescue, 501(c)(3) rescues that pool animals, transfers to outside of our county. Euthanasia, that's never a fun one. So as much as we would never want to euthanize an animal in general, we actually have a pretty low euthanasia rate compared to other counties. So we're at a 29% euthanasia rate. We would love to reduce that. These numbers also include euthanasia for owner-request euthanasias. Someone from the public needs help. All the prices of veterinarians have gone up. And so we can provide that service for someone from the public for a very minimal price. So please keep us in mind if you're in need of that, okay? So our total calls for service, that includes stray animals, injured animals, aggressive animals, dog bites, bark complaints, cruelty investigations. So reported bites, I just feel like this is an important one, just to recognize. We've had, we've had less bites, I'd say, reported to us over the years. But the only way that we get bites reported to us are by a hospital or the member of the public themselves. So if you're calling to report something and you said, well, you know, this animal has already bitten me twice, if it wasn't reported, it's like it didn't happen. So those things need to be reported to us. So field services for deceased animals. So we carry a, we cover a pretty large area. And the, one of the points I want to make is on major highways, such as Highway 99, that's going all the way through Live Oak and South County, that's actually not an area that we cover. So if you see a deceased animal, you want to call Caltrans versus our facility. And if someone calls us, we will call Caltrans. So licensing revenue has gone down. And again, people have less money. Everything costs more. Veterinary care costs more. So this is an area that people tend to neglect. So we've had multiple trap neuter release programs being offered at our facility. One works strictly with rescues, working on colonies of feral cats. They pick up the cats, they fix them, and then they put them back. We also have a program where you can pick up two vouchers per Sutter County resident if you have a feral cat at your home or in your neighborhood. And you can get a voucher, and that voucher pays for the spay or neuter of that cat. And so you pick that up from us. You schedule something with the SBCA, and you go from there. But our point is to decrease the number of kittens and feral cats from overpopulating the area, which is very hard to do everywhere. So feathers to farms. So I actually made notes for this one here. So the chickens within Yuba City is a polarizing issue. I'm sure everybody's got a feeling for them one way or another. Although we at SASSA were able to capture over 700 chickens during the program, it was ultimately unsustainable. Adopters became impossible to find due to the fact that most of the birds that we were capturing were roosters. A lot of people put their names on our list to adopt a chicken, a hen, but not so interested in roosters. It was difficult to capture and house the chickens. Our animal control officers and staff were pulled from their incredibly busy jobs, making work fall to the wayside. SASSA animal control officers cover a large area ranging from Riego Road in South County, Meridian, and the city of Live Oak. With only two animal control officers on duty at a time and 608 square miles to cover, our resources to catch chickens proved an inefficient use of SASSA resources. And most importantly, SASSA is a joint powers authority that serves the city of Yuba City, Sutter County, and the city of Live Oak. The program was not serving the JPA as a whole, leaving some jurisdictions with less service. It's my recommendation that if the city pleases, that they hire an outside contractor more equipped to deal with the overpopulation of chickens. And these are just some of our local rescue liaisons. We work very closely with rescue plows. Field Haven is a resource that works with us, the Yuba Sutter SPCA, and of course, the Wildlife Rehab Center. Anytime we get wildlife, we can call them, and they'll pick it up. These are just some of our outside agencies that have helped us often with animal rescues. So ARF, you've got South Coast Humane, Pitts RS, Muttville, and Labs to Love. We have a close relationship with Yuba College. We have a routine, weekly RVT Vet Tech program that, where they get a chance to learn about the shelter experience and get more hands-on experience at our facility with Yuba College. We also work with Sutter County One Stop, UC Davis Veterinary Medical Program, local North Point works with us very closely, as well as Davies Animal Hospital. And last, the Friends of SASSA is our 501(c)(3) nonprofit. When we have fundraisers, when a donation is made to SASSA, all of that money goes into the Friends of SASSA fund. And that way, when we request something that's needed at our facility, they can vote on that and decide that if that's the way, it needs to be spent. And they're always looking for board members if you'd like to apply. That's it.
I think we're good. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Moving on to item number four, potential November 24 revenue measure update.
All right, good evening, mayor and council. So I'm here to talk to you tonight about the potential revenue measure. And this is the cover of the presentation that we are doing when we go out to service clubs or wherever we're invited to do presentations. So I wanted to show you this. I'm not going to do this presentation tonight. Instead, I want to focus on our website because our website has a wealth of information. And I don't think people are very familiar with it. So I want to run through that. So Sierra could bring up the website. Okay. So if you go to yubacity.net/revmeasure, we also have revenue measure directed to it because people may, you know, type in either one. And this is where you land. And so it immediately goes into some basics about the potential revenue measure, 1%. It would allow local control over local funds. I think what's been the most interesting as we've gone out and done two presentations so far, people are shocked that of the 7.25% sales tax rate in the city of Yuba City, the city only receives 1%. And I think a lot of people think that entire 7.25% comes back to the city when in fact, it's 1% and the remainder goes largely to the state and then a portion to the county. As you navigate this webpage, you can see some basic facts. And then we break down into specifics of roads, fire, the Walton-Happy Park area. What that's talking about is providing police services to the Walton-Happy Park area, homelessness, the budget, and then frequently asked questions. If you go into each of these sections, there's presentations related to it. If you go into roads, for instance, it has the grand jury report. It has information related to Ben's presentation during the budget. It talks about pavement condition index. There's maps. That's just the road piece. If you go into these others, there's just as much information. The other thing that I would like to point out is we have the joint city council Board of Supervisor meeting last December. We also have the presentation. If you click on community feedback, this is where you can submit information for us to contact you and provide you feedback. We have media, which we've had some articles recently in the Appeal Democrat, the Territorial Dispatch. Ben is still hearing about what keeps him up at night, and that's roads, everybody. And then we also have the 93Q interviews. The mayor and I just did one a couple of weeks ago. This area will continue to build over time as we put more articles out, as we do more radio interviews, PSAs. And so this will be tracking all of that. The other thing is informational meetings. You can see that, you know, the month of May, we have quite a few scheduled in terms of, we did completed Rotary in the Downtown Business Association. Next week, we have Alliance for Hispanic Advancement, the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, the Yuba Sutter Farm Bureau Executive Committee. And then Mayor Harris and Chief Alexandria will be doing a 93Q interview. This is May. And even though that looks like a lot of dates, we're happy to do more. If your neighborhood, if you would like to have a neighborhood meeting, if you would like to have us come out, we'll meet with a small group, we'll meet with a large group. And this is really just informational activities. We're not here to advocate for it. We're not here to convince. We're here to provide information as to what are the priorities for this potential revenue measure. And what that is, is those funds could be spent on roads and public safety. So as you go through this webpage, you'll find all of the information related to that. All right. We also have this flyer, which I placed some on the table in the back. So this flyer talks about the breakdown of the current sales tax. What could a 1% revenue measure generate? Approximately $17.5 million. Of that, the city is working on developing a tax-sharing agreement with the county in which the county would receive about 33% of those funds. The city would receive 67%. Also, it's important to note, if you go buy goods in surrounding jurisdictions,[1761.36] jurisdictions, you're paying higher than a 7.25% tax rate now. You are paying in Marysville 8.25%, Chico 8.75%, Colusa 8.75%. And there's a lot of things that sales tax do not apply to, including groceries, medicine, education, labor, and housing. And so this flyer is kind of a one-stop shop to get the basics. It also goes into the very specifics of what these funds could be spent on in terms of road, repair, fire, homelessness, police, sheriff, and district attorney. I'm not going to go into all those in detail because we really want you to invite us to come out and meet with your groups. We also have some QR code cards at the back that you can scan that'll take you directly to the website and provide that information. Again, informational meetings, we're happy to come talk to anybody. And we really want to get the word out there in terms of what this is proposed for. So with that, does council have any questions? This is an informational presentation, but do you have any questions?
Through the mayor. It's not really a question. It's just, I want to say thank you. I've had the privilege of being at both of the first two presentations. And what you've been able to convey along with our team, I know Chief Baker was there and Mr. Moody was there, has been very clear and well-received. And so I just want to say thank you for a clear, concise message because that's the way we have to be with the public. So I just want to thank you all for what you've done so far.
Thank you. Yes, you get four for the price of one. You get two chiefs, a public works director, and myself. We're going to try to hit most of these neighborhood meetings. In some situations, you might get three of us or two of us, but it's really important that you hear it from the perspective of each of those individuals. And then, again, what's key about a revenue measure within Yuba City is that those funds stay local. So that entire 1% comes back to the city, of which, like I said, we're working on tax sharing agreement with Sutter County. But again, the focus is to, those funds would be able to be spent on roads and public safety.
Through the mayor.
You can go first.
Oh, go ahead.
You first. Okay. Thank you for letting me go first. Diana, where, thank you for putting this up because I'm terrible at navigating this stuff. Where can we find per capita, what monies are being spent? Because we have those figures, I believe, of tax, sales tax dollars. Is that in here as well?
That is not in here. And so when you look at the sales tax and the per capita amount, it's a very complex calculation. We actually had to hire our sales tax consultant to do that. And what's different about the sales tax that we collect currently under the 7.25%, it's based upon the point of sale versus under this proposed sales tax measure, it's at the point of receipt. And so it's a little bit different. So the proportion related to this would be, there's a large portion of that that would come from local residents. But it's also key, anybody shopping within Yuba City would help contribute to that fund. So it's not just Yuba City residents. It's not just, you know, Sutter County residents that shop within Yuba City. It's a larger group than that.
The reason why I ask that is because I looked at that report, and I was trying to discern, is it up to 48% of sales tax is from people out of the area? Because there was two numbers there. Or is it the 30-some percent?
So that's, there's a percentage under the Bradley Burns, which is the current 1% that we receive under the 7.25%. When you look at this sales tax, the portion from outside is a little bit, is less than that amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the mayor. I think, Ms. Langley, if you could spend a little bit more time on the Citizens Oversight Committee, that's the one that I keep getting things asked about.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you for that reminder. I have a sign-up sheet in the back if anybody would like to be a part of the Citizen Oversight Committee. The Citizen Oversight Committee is a group that will be advisory to the city council. And what we're envisioning at this point, and we'll be bringing forward parameters related to that committee within the next couple of months, is that that committee would review the proposed expenditures of these funds. They would also do a look back to see how the funds were actually spent. And does that align with the intent of how the funds were supposed to be spent? And one of the questions that we've received is, well, you know, councils change. How do we know that these funds are going to stay towards these specific uses? And if you listen to Ben's presentation on roads, there's $150 million backlog. At $17.5 million per year, of which we retain 67%, it would take a long time to get to $150 million. So what we're envisioning is that we would do debt financing, sell bonds, so that you can do a large portion of the roads at once, and then you pay a debt service payment on that. What that does is that ties up the money for a few years, so you know that those funds are going to go towards that specific use. If you go into the fire portion of it, we're talking about a new fire station at Station 1, which is our main station across from the library. That's a $20 million price tag. Again, we're going to need to finance that. So that Citizen Oversight Committee would evaluate the expenditures and make sure that, does that align with what the original intent of the measure was? Did that answer your question? Would you like to add anything to that?
I think you covered it. I just think the importance of the Citizen Oversight Committee is it's not just a group that's going to be made up of all those who are in favor. I think it's our intent to make that Citizens Oversight Committee actually functional and accountable to the rest of the residents who hopefully will vote in support of this. So I encourage anyone out there, and also those who might be viewing this, to sign up. We're taking signups as it stands right now. Obviously, more to come on the actual function, but there's a lot of other entities up and down the state that have functioning oversight committees. We'll be borrowing the best from all of those. And when we develop this particular oversight, it's very important that the money be used for what it was intended to be used for.
Right. These would be volunteers. They would not be paid by the city. We do need to work out logistics in terms of terms for how long somebody would stay on the oversight committee. And it's also important to note that with the proposed tax sharing agreement with Sutter County, that same Citizen Oversight Committee would oversee that as well. And so that we have continuity across the board in terms of how city funds are spent, and then how city funds that are shared with the county are spent.
Through the mayor again?
Yes, sir.
Diana, how large is this committee, what's the body going to be? 17, 11, 15? What are we envisioning?
To be determined. But if you look at other agencies, I've seen in the range of like eight or so. They're not, they're not large groups. And with this council, you know, what we'll need to do more research is, is it broken out where you have a representative within each district? Or, you know, how do you determine the number of folks? And so we'll be evaluating how other agencies are doing it, and then coming forward with a recommendation to council as to how to set up this oversight committee.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Through the mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you for that presentation, Diana. And I'd like to thank the staff for doing such a great job at the one meeting that I attended. What I observed was a very clear and concise message, and it left a lot of time for questions and comments from the audience. And it was really nice to hear the suggestions from the audience of where else we need to take the message to. So thank you.
Basically ditto, Diana. Along with everything else, everyone says complimentary of the process so far, how we're managing our efforts to get the information out to the community and the voters so they can make up their mind. I just want to comment on the website. It's like a gold standard, man, because it's got everything there, all the details, everything you think about. I use it even myself. When I'm at home or wherever on the phone, I refer to stuff on that. And it's, they did a really, really good job. So thank you for that.
So acknowledgement needs to go to Sierra.
All right.
It also needs to go to Crystal Martin.
All right.
You know, these brochures don't come from mines like mine, you know? I'm an engineer. I'm very analytical. Thank goodness there are people out there that have more spatial awareness that can put this together. And so appreciate everybody's efforts in this because it has been a group effort.
Absolutely. It's very user-friendly and much appreciated. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll go on to number five, appearance of interested citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. We do have one written request from a Mr., I don't know if it's Kenecko or Kaneko. Kenecko? Come on up, sir. You have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Harris, Vice Mayor Shaw, council members. My name is Keith Kenecko, and I'm from Amrock LLC. Our company is a perimeter security provider, physical security, that is. And the reason why I'm here is, I'm really here on behalf of Caliber Collision and Light Businesses. Caliber Collision resides on 1170 Lee Market Street. And this technology that our company provides, security technology, is to address commercial property crime. It's not specific to retail. That's a whole separate sector of kind of crime that's occurring, unfortunately, throughout our state, but specifically commercial property crime. Best way to envision it is properties that are bound to storing their valuable assets in an outdoor yard. Caliber Collision, your vehicle unfortunately gets into a wreck, has to be there for a few days, it gets stored in an outdoor lot. Unfortunately, criminals know this. They target businesses like Caliber Collision, equipment rental places, freight, cargo, any place that has outdoor storage. And they obviously, nothing holds them back with regard to general fencing, barbed wire, razor wire, even cameras now are dismissed by the criminal element. Our technology is an electrified security fence. It is highly effective. It is not new to the state. We have, our business, our company alone has more than 1,000 installations statewide. Many of them are kind of in the surrounding area, Chico, Reading, Davis, Sacramento, et cetera. This technology is widely accepted by municipalities across the state. I'm really here just to request your leadership and consideration. I've had a lot of discussions with Director Libby. I want to thank him for his diligence in reviewing all this. And certainly would like to come forth to the city council eventually to request that the city ordinance be amended to allow this type of perimeter security technology. Now, if I may take a little side departure here to explain what it is. Visually, it is a security fence behind a fence. It's a fence behind a fence. The electrified security fence is never the perimeter fence itself. There's a specific safeguards that are governed by California Civil Code Section 835 that discusses the specific safeguards and requirements for this type of security technology. This is very different than just an animal containment electric fence. That's covered under the food and ag code in this California law. The Civil Code specifically addresses security purposes, security intent for electrified security fencing. This technology, it is medically safe. There are international safety standards that are adopted into state law, and also adopted by a lot of municipalities that amend their codes to ensure that this technology is installed appropriately in appropriate places, as well as the proper engineering standards for safety, for public safety. And I guess let's describe just briefly what it is. The reason why it is safe, it is pulsed current. It is not continuous currents. Every 1.3 seconds, it sends a less than a millisecond pulse through the electrified security fence wires. And it will definitely get your attention. It's a memorable experience, but you would walk away going, I don't want to do that again. I've had to demonstrate it unfortunately a few times. But again, this technology is governed specifically by safety standards, international safety standards that have been adopted into state law. Also want to mention too, that this particular technology is very specific, again, to just certain types of properties. It's not intended for residential use. That's prohibited by state law. It's specifically for commercial purposes. And again, not retail, very specific to heavy commercial industrial manufacturing-type properties. So with that, I certainly request your leadership and consideration. Certainly look forward to working with staff if leadership so chooses to kind of explore this option. Local municipalities, again, Chico, Reading is probably the best, most recent instance where we amended local code. Worked very closely with staff there to adopt a very appropriate code for the city of Reading. But again, many municipalities across the state utilize this technology, again, allowing businesses to secure what's rightfully theirs. But also, as a final comment, what I've heard, especially since the pandemic, and maybe the criminal elements becoming, has become a lot more aggressive and brazen, I'm hearing from businesses that I not only need this technology to keep my stuff from being stolen, but I need it for public safety. I need to ensure that when my employees come to work, they're not faced with a criminal hiding in their truck cab, you know, hiding on the property somewhere. It has now become a public safety, you know, measure in terms of a solution to address that particular issue. So I just wanted to mention that. This is more than just protecting material assets. It's also about securing people's interests and their well-being. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kenecko. Does your company have a website? Or do you have a business card you can run down here real quick or anything like that?
Yes.
All right. Either way, didn't matter. Any other member of the public wish to speak? You have three minutes. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yeah, all right. So with that being said, anyone else want to speak for the public? We'll go with the consent calendar. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on, excuse me, of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. As I mentioned before, due to anticipated recusals, items 13 and 14 are being pulled from the consent calendar and will be voted on separately. And so do we have any comments from the public on consent calendar items 6 through 12 and 15 through 20? I don't know if he's going to talk or he's leaving. All right. No, we do not. So we can handle this with a motion in a second.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve the consent calendar items 6 through 12, 15 through 20.
Second.
All right. Have a motion to approve by council member Boom Garden and second by council member Pasquale. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to item number 13.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself from items 13 and 14 as we own property within the limits of these two properties.
All right, sir. We'll see you in a few minutes.
Through the mayor. Both of these can be taken as consent calendar items at the same time without stopping.
So a separate consent calendar. Perfect.
One motion for both of them, if you like.
One mo, do we need presentations?
There doesn't need to be any presentations.
No presentations, okay.
But you have to, if you can.
Public comment. Public comment. Famous for that. Do we have any public comment on items 13 and 14? Pretty routine stuff. All right. Motion, please.
Hey, through the mayor.
Yes.
I move to, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent calendar items number 13 and 14.
Second.
First and the second to approve, 13, 14. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And none opposed. Someone can please bring Vice Mayor back in. We'll move on to number 21, Terre Boina Community Traffic Ad Hoc Committee presented by Ben Moody.
All right. So good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So this item before you, it's a follow-up action from our previous meeting. Really, it's from about a month ago. So there's been a history of us working with the Terre Boina community, trying to figure out some of the traffic solutions out there. And so one of the past meetings, there was direction given to staff to come back to council and look to establish and designate two council members to steer the Terre Boina Community Traffic Ad Hoc Committee. And so this would be not to exceed for one year. And so this committee would basically look at potential, what's going on in that area, potential options and solutions on how to possibly move forward to address some of those issues. Quick background, February 8th, a community workshop was held for the, a select area of the Terre Boina community. And then March 19th, we had a follow-up meeting to report back. And from that, that's where direction was given to come back and consider setting this up. And so just a quick map for a visual, some of the original communication for that Terre Boina community workshop, we bounded that area by Western Parkway on the west, Harder Parkway on the east, Jefferson Avenue on the north, and State Route 20. And that was originally selected because of a lot of the issues going on with George Washington Boulevard at State Route 20, and then some of the development there in the southern portion of Terre Boina. I know Terre Boina, it's kind of a nebulous area. I know Terre Boina, it's, it's kind of a nebulous area there when you go west on Butte House and to the north. So we're, we're saying Terre Boina, but we're really focused on that area originally. And so with, with council direction, at the last meeting, there was talk about expanding it with potential boundaries of being township to the west, Butte House to the north, State Route 20 south, and then Harder Parkway to the east. What, one of the big takeaways that I had at the last meeting after reporting was, there's definitely different perspectives on the options based on where somebody might live or what their traffic pattern is. And so this was just a map showing some of the interested at the last meeting and then also feedback that we've received from the articles where people have requested to be members or be considered for members of the ad hoc committee when reviewed, is we just kind of spot, spot shown some of the locations of where those members are. And so that's definitely a recommendation we make to the ad hoc council members as they steer this, that when we select members that we look at maybe geolocating them a little bit as far as what they're, to give a little bit of diversity to what those options are. And so that's just a visual to kind of show where people were at. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know there are some members of the Terre Boina community in the audience as far as noticing for this. It was really direction from the last meeting to say, bring this forward to this May 7th meeting. We also put it on social media and then we reached out to the Terre Boina Neighborhood Committee and then also called any people that, we had eight to 10 people that were interested in being on that member, we reached out and let them know we were coming tonight.
Thank you, Ben. Any member of the public care to comment on this committee? No? Ms. Pasquale, you look like you're about to say something.
No.
You were not.
I was just getting so that people could see me because I sit so low.
All right. I know that I, my term is over, up in December, ad hocs typically run a year, so I would not be appropriate for me to step in, even though I live out there, I would be, I would like to. Do I have any interest from any other members on the council? I believe I might.
See, you're looking my way. Of course, I am very willing to continue to participate with looking into this issue. So if.
Thank you, sir.
So chooses, I'd love to participate.
All right.
And through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
If it's the council's wish, following in your footsteps, I'll be here next year, I would be willing to partner with Councilmember Boom Garden since it's in his district.
All right, we have those two. You guys good? Done deal. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Item number 22, Recycling Industries Amendment to Use Permit, UP 17-5 and DP 1703. This is a, stand by one second.
Excuse me, mayor, before we go on to this, I see some people that had originally submitted interest in being on the, the citizen portion of the ad hoc, and I see them kind of looking around like, well, what are the next steps? So if Mr. Moody could get up there and just briefly talk about the next steps in terms of the individuals that submitted their information to participate, so they know what to expect, please.
Thank you for spotting that, appreciate it.
Yes, great, thank you. And so in this, staff will regroup and probably lay out a tentative schedule to meet up with the selected council members for the ad hoc committee and then work to establish an agenda and then work on how we'll establish a group, you know, so with their input, figure out how we're going to advertise or look out to select group members and then we'll try to begin coordinating meetings and bring agenda topics that basically work through a background on the development, cars, traffics, and really what that group, what direction that group wants to take us as far as how deep dive, how deep of a dive we want to analyze the traffic and then potential solutions on how far, if it's just a recommendation to the future council or to the full council as to what option they pick, or if we do a deep dive into different options and funding and, and go really where that group takes us. And so I would expect next steps to reach out to the council members. That usually takes a few weeks to set dates, kind of come up with a process, and then we would be reaching out to those selected committee members or advertising for them probably in the next couple of months in order to establish that group. But it's, it's really at the, the will of the council members, but it will play out over the next couple of months before we are starting to kind of advertise and get back. Sometimes sooner, sometimes a little longer.
Does that help? Do you have any questions or anything? You sure? Okay. You know where to find us.
And then in the meantime, absolutely, if there's any questions, I'm always available staff that we could kind of give you update or status and maybe we could work on that, some sort of status update as we're working on that.
Probably going to be stepping out, we'll let them do their thing. You out, Paul? You standing? You're working on leaving, okay. All right, and thank you again, Diana, for noticing that, I appreciate it. All right, I have a, like a three-page script, a very thorough script here for this hearing. Thank you to our, our city attorney for providing that, I appreciate it. So I'm going to go ahead and call, I'm just going to read it here, I'm going to call in January 22, Recycling Industries Amendment to Use Permit 1705 and Development Plan 17-03. Site is located 140 Epley Drive, south of Lincoln Road, east of Garden Highway. And so are there any council members who need to make disclosures regarding any communications or conflicts of interest at this point? Nor do I. The hearing is an appeal of a decision of the planning commission. Unless the council desires otherwise, we'll use this following this process. It will be a staff presentation. Recycling Industries representative or representatives will then have 10 minutes to speak in support of their permit. Stop the Dump representative or representatives will then have 10 minutes to speak in support of their opposition. I will then generally open the hearing to the public. The first priority will be given to those who have filled out comment cards and provided them to the city clerk. I do have one comment card here. After all, members of the public have had an opportunity to comment, recycling industry representatives have a total of six minutes to offer any rebuttal or closing remarks, if any. I'll then close the public comment portion of the hearing. Staff may then provide any comments or responses to questions raised during the public comment period. And I will then provide the council members an opportunity to make any comments if they wish. And after appropriate deliberation, council will then take action. Good? All right. City clerk, please note that staff reports and other written materials included in the agenda packet are hereby received and filed and have any other written documents such as letters in opposition or in support been submitted after the agenda packet was provided?
None received.
None, okay, thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
For the purpose of clarification for the public, this involved an expedited process where the planning commission was not involved. An initial recommendation was initially taken up on the first instance for the council this evening. So this is part of a streamlined process to allow, to come to the public through the city council tonight for the first time. Thank you.
Which is why it's a little bit different protocol for, for this thing. All right, this time I'll ask staff make its presentation, submit any written documents. If council members wish to ask any questions, they can do so after staff presentation or wait until the public comments have concluded. Welcome, Doug.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council members. Presentation's going to be a little bit longer than I might usually halve, but I'll just power through and we'll get through it, so. So this is for recycling industries, it's a use permit development plan amendment. So the purpose of this is to consider the amendment to use permit 1705 and development plan 1703 for recycling industries. It's a, their site's located at 140 Epley Drive, it's just over four acres in size, it has industrial zoning, it has a general plan designation of manufacturing, processing, and warehousing. A little entitlement history, goes back to 2008 when the planning commission approved use permit 0712, which allowed recycling industries to relocate from Wilbur Avenue to their current location at Epley Drive. In 2014, the planning commission approved use permit 1201, which converted the facility to a large volume transfer station with 100 tons per day limit of mixed waste and recyclables. And then in 2019, on appeal from the planning commission, the city council approved use permit 1705 and development plan 1703 and adopted a mitigated negative declaration amending the previous entitlements. Now your staff report does include a lot more detail about those entitlements. So what is the request? There's a number of them. So they're asking to modify condition three to increase the allowed tonnage from 100 to 300 tons per day. And what was interesting, I think from staff's perspective when we were looking at this request, is that when we get reports from recycling industries per the host fee agreement, we found out that they're actually processing about 20 to 25% of their current maximum that they're allowed. And so begs the question, why do they need to go from 100 tons to 300 tons then? So that's a question that we still haven't, have not seen answered yet. They're asking to modify condition four, which is to eliminate the restriction that material only come from Sutter and Yuba counties. They're requesting to modify condition five to eliminate the 10% patrusible material limit. For those who don't understand what the patrusible material limit is, what that is, is that is waste that generates odor, typically biological matter. They're asking to modify condition seven, which would allow tire storage beyond a single 40-yard container. Condition 10, eliminate the prohibition on packer trucks. For those who don't know, a packer truck is the typical garbage truck you might see from recology driving around town. Condition 12, revise hours of operation to allow seven-day operation. Eliminate condition 59 pertaining to build out of the project. Staff doesn't have really any concern on this when we feel that condition has been met. And then eliminate condition 60, requiring future modifications be submitted to the city council and notification of project opponents. So from our analysis, the applicant has maintained that the 2019 environmental document analyzed the environmental impacts of the proposed revisions. However, staff has a slightly different take on this and believes there are deficient areas as it pertains to the requested changes, including the existing environmental document doesn't analyze potential environmental impacts for importing materials from outside the Yuba Sutter area, and we covered that in more detail in your staff report. The traffic analysis does not analyze regional impacts or impacts to the state highway system due to the importing of material from outside the area. In fact, the existing traffic study only analyzed three select intersections. And I think on this point, it's important to note that since the project was, had its 2019 approval, there was a change in state law and it was a big change for environmental review. Up until July, I think it's July 1st of 2020, when you did an environmental analysis, agencies could look at levels of service standards. That went to the wayside. Starting from that point forward, we're required to look at vehicle miles traveled in the transportation analysis section. And this project does not have that from the 2019 environmental document. Following recycling industry's 2019 approval, Sutter County completed a traffic study, and this was based largely upon the proliferation of truck yards south of the city area, along Highway 99. And that study determined, it was actually received by the Board of Supervisors on June 22nd, 2021, and it determined that a number of intersections of county roads with the state highway did not meet the county general plan level of service standard of D for either the AM or PM peak hours or both. And that was Highway 99 Reed, Highway 99 Walnut Avenue, and Highway 99 at Oswald. Recycling industry's traffic analysis predates this county study and doesn't analyze the project's potential impacts to the state highway system locally or regionally due to the increasing permissible tons per day by the facility. Increasing the tonnage from 100 to 300 could result in new noise and vibration impacts due to the increased number of truck trips traveling to and from the facility. These impacts were not previously analyzed. The project does not have defined haul routes, however, the road intersections analyzed in the traffic study provide a basis. Last year, the grand jury determined, and we thought it was important to put quotes here, road pavement throughout Yuba City currently requires extensive maintenance and refurbishment to sufficiently provide for critical transportation infrastructure, close quotation. The city confirmed this finding and also determined that local resident roads require similar types of maintenance and refurbishment. Over the last two years, the Yuba Sutter area, including Yuba City, has experienced unusually significant amounts of precipitation, which has hastened the deterioration of our roadways. We drive around town and see that every day. Fragile roadway infrastructure is disproportionately affected by heavy vehicles such as garbage and packer trucks. They have a much higher equivalent single axle loads than lighter weight vehicles, having exponential, not linear, impact on the asphalt, meaning that a single packer truck can have several thousand times the impact of a typical car or SUV. Increased truck traffic will exacerbate the already compromised streets and there is potentially a substantial increase in severity of previously assessed traffic impacts on public infrastructure. This change in circumstance was not assessed in the subsequent mitigated negative declaration adopted in 2019. That previous environmental document assessed the project's hours and days of operation. However, changes proposed are for earlier times of operation, including operations on Sundays as early as 7:00 a.m., with ancillary outdoor operations starting as early as 6:30. None of that was assessed in the previous environmental document. Many locations along Garden Highway, Second Street, and Lincoln Road are developed with single-family homes not protected from the impacts of noise and sound walls or other mitigation. Increasing truck trips, the time of early operations, especially during the early morning hours and weekends, could significantly exacerbate noise and vibration impacts. The previous environmental document assessed impacts including odor based on green waste being removed within 48 hours of acceptance on the site. However, proposed amendments would modify the current requirement of green waste being removed within 48 hours to allow removal at a frequency approved by the local enforcement agency. This would allow green waste to potentially remain on the site longer than 48 hours, which was not a scenario previously analyzed. Now the map on the screen shows the, the yellow highlighted areas, that represents areas along Lincoln Road and Garden Highway that are residential, so Lincoln can be more multi-family residential, that does not have sound walls or other noise mitigation to prevent, to minimize noise impacts. Additionally, if you look at Garden Highway towards the north of the project, along Second Street also, there's additional single-family homes that are not protected from impacts of noise and vibration from sound walls. And so what we're talking about is, there's some locations that have a fence, but some locations have nothing. And then the bottom picture on the screen, you will see, it's taken along Lincoln Road, and there's no sound, sound walls along that location. So with regard to findings, our municipal code lays out six findings that must be made and supported with substantial evidence to approve a use permit or an amendment to a use permit. And these findings are laid out here on the screen. After looking at those, we determined that the project does not comply with finding two, three, and five. So with regard to finding two, because the city council did not approve any of the requested changes in 2019, it is unclear as to whether serious consideration was given to the potential impacts and is unclear whether serious consideration was given as to whether these proposed operational changes would impact the appropriateness of the size and shape of the site. The applicant has not provided information specifically addressing this finding in the application package. With regard to finding number three, without further analysis regarding the routing and volume of truck traffic associated with the proposed amendments, it is unclear whether the streets serving the site are adequate to carry the increased traffic generated by the significant increase in operations as the previous environmental document did not analyze truck traffic traveling more regionally from counties other than the counties of Sutter and Yuba. As a result, staff believes there is a lack of substantial evidence to support the making of this finding. Finding number five, that's the health, safety, peace, comfort, and general welfare of the city finding. This could result, the amendments proposed could result in increased odors as well as an increase in the number of trucks traveling to and from the site to remove the increased amount of material delivered to the site. Additionally, the increased traffic and amount of patrusible material may significantly increase greenhouse gas emissions, emissions, and other criteria pollutants, including diesel particulate matter and other toxic air contaminants that have not been sufficiently analyzed. The GHG and air quality analysis in the 2019 environmental document did not analyze these things. did not analyze these things. So with regard to development plan findings, four findings are required to approve it. However, we determined that two of the findings, findings one and two, cannot be made, and they're similar to the use permit findings. So for finding number one for development plan, you would look at the response to use permit finding two, and for the finding two for development plan, you would actually look at our response to use permit finding three. So what is staff's conclusion? Based on staff's knowledge and experience, and so for this, for myself as well as Director Ben Moody, we provided our statement of qualifications to the council as well as out in the foyer. It is reasonably foreseeable the requested modifications could materially change the operations of the transfer station and could result in new significant environmental impacts or an increase in the severity of the potentially significant impacts identified in the two thousand nineteen environmental document. The applicant has not provided information and additional analysis explaining why these operational changes would not require additional environmental review, and has consistently maintained the changes proposed were analyzed in the two thousand nineteen environmental document for use permit seventeen oh five and development plan seventeen oh three. As a result, it appears the environmental analysis for the amendments is incomplete and inadequate for the purpose of evaluating this application. City council alternatives. So separate from staff's recommendation, we believe the council could approve the amendment or conditionally approve it as alternatives, or direct staff and the applicant to conduct additional environmental review before the city council considers the amendment application at a future public meeting. If the council wanted to consider alternatives, one or two, we would suggest a continuance in order to allow alternate findings be prepared, which we would want to discuss with you probably a little further. So what is our recommendation? Adopt a resolution at the city council denying an amendment to use permit seventeen oh five and development plan seventeen oh three based on the findings contained in the resolution for recycling industries located at one forty Eppley Drive and Assessor's Parcel five four zero eight three zero two six. And that would conclude staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. We'll first hear from recycling industries and then Stop the Dump.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is Scott Miller. I'm an attorney for recycling industries. I'm here to speak, to present on recycling industries' behalf in favor, or actually, in favor of the application that was submitted. We believe that council, after hearing my presentation, we hope that council will consider our points and, at a minimum, continue tonight's hearing or instruct staff to, to consider the changes that we're going to present to you now and revisit this issue in a future To give you a little bit of background, this application was submitted July twenty twenty-three, as council is aware, and during that time, this was July, August twenty twenty-three, the city submitted various requests for information. Recycling Industries, they were communicating with Mr. David Kuhn at the time, and he submitted all of the information that staff requested. There were meetings, and to the extent that staff requested information regarding the environmental analysis, the, any further items that were requested, Mr. Kuhn was accommodating. He provided all of the information requested. On October twelfth, twenty twenty-three, we were notified, recycling industries was notified, that by letter saying the application was complete, and that if any additional information regarding environmental review or further information would be needed, that that information would be requested. Recycling Industries did not hear anything further from staff until April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, this is a few weeks ago, when they were notified that this item would be on the agenda, and the recommendation was to deny the application. And this was, this was the first time recycling industries was made aware of this decision of council, and this was, you know, several months after submission of the application and communication with staff, with no further communication since October twelfth. And this was despite recycling industries' various requests, you know, we'd run into staff here and there and ask if there's any further information that they needed to complete this application, and they were told, not at this time, we'll let you know. And so with the staff report before you tonight, we were made aware for the first time that there is information that is still missing, and as Mr. Libby presented to you a second ago, there is still environmental analysis that, that staff believes is still needed in order to make a recommendation, in order to make findings under the municipal code as required. And in the past, I guess, week and a half or so, I have reached out to the city attorney, I've reached out to Stop the Dump's attorney, and advised them of various changes that recycling industries will consider as part of its application. As council may recall, the application has eight requested modifications. Now, Mr. Libby mentioned, one point real quickly, mentioned that there was a ninth one, which involved the green waste. I will submit that's not on the application, that wasn't part of it. To the extent that, that council is considering it, recycling industries is willing to waive that, request to modify that condition. Now, of these eight remaining modifications, there are three of which recycling industries is willing to waive and withdraw outright. And then there's one, and Mr. Libby mentioned this, this is condition of approval number fifty-nine, that has already been met, no longer applies. And then there are four more. That leaves four requests for modification of conditions of approval that recycling industries is willing to continue its discussions with the city and with, with Ms. Barnes and Stop the Dump to reach a point where we can have, where staff can recommend an approval of this application. And I understand this situation is, is not ideal, and, and we're aware of that, we understand. And, and I just want to say that with respect to that, the communication over the past six months, you know, to date, has been such that recycling industries feels that it has not, not had the opportunity to communicate these points to the city for one reason or another. And here we are. It is what it is, but I will submit to you now that we are, recycling industries is available to discuss further. We have these proposed modifications, and we ask that council consider those. And I will present those to you now briefly. The ones that recycling industries is willing to waive, I'll start with those, to withdraw. This is the request for the increase in patriciable material, the ten percent, or lifting of the restriction of the maximum ten percent. Recycling Industries is willing to withdraw that request from its application. That's condition of approval number five. Now, condition of approval number twelve, that is the, the condition, the request to have the facility open on Sundays, so seven days a week instead of six. Recycling Industries is willing to withdraw that, that request for modification. The condition number sixty, which is the requirement, the condition of approval whereby recycling industries is required to notify staff, notify Stop the Dump of receipt of any applications for modification, and notify the city, we're willing to withdraw that request for that modification. Now, the remaining four, and that includes the increase of tons per day from one hundred to three hundred, the, the change in the condition number seven, which is, and the increase for backing up, the increase of tons per day from one hundred to three hundred, that's condition of approval number three. And then condition number seven, which involves tires, currently says they shall be stored in a bin no larger than forty yards in size. A maximum of one tire bin shall be at the facility at any given time. That condition, recycling industries is interested in getting, they propose to amend that to allow compliance with state law. And the idea is to allow more storage. State law allows four hundred ninety-nine tires on the site at any given time, and recycling industries is interested in modifying this condition to allow fewer tires to be on the site at any given time and, and more often to be removed from the site, and at no time would be destroyed, are displayed visibly. And, and then condition number ten, which is the restriction on packer trucks. Recycling Industries, in its application, proposed lifting that restriction entirely. And one of the reasons that was proposed is to allow Saylove the opportunity to, to deposit its waste that it collects at the site for free as a service to the community. And Saylove currently will bring it by way of small trailers to allow the packer truck to come. This is the packer truck, I understand, is named Daisy. To allow the packer truck to come, it would happen once or twice a week at the most, and this restriction, lifting this restriction would allow this to happen. Now, I understand Stop the Dump's concern, staff's concern, that a wholesale lifting of this restriction altogether raises concerns about packer trucks coming elsewhere, from elsewhere. That's fair, and recycling industries is willing to negotiate with staff, with Stop the Dump, to modify the language to allow that, to allow, to restrict it to certain types of packer trucks. This is also an opportunity for recology, when it, when its trucks peruse the area, instead of going to East Marysville, it could reduce that trip by a substantial amount of time by allowing its trucks to deposit at the transfer station recycling industries has. And that is the, these types of concerns are what recycling industries is willing to discuss, and we believe that with the opportunity for a continuance, we can reach agreement on these terms, not necessarily exactly how I laid it out, but that's part of the process of negotiating this. And I've had, as I mentioned, I've had productive discussions this week with-
All right, Ms. Miller, your time is up. You're aware of that, right?
Oh, okay. I apologize.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody here to speak on behalf of Stop the Dump, step on forward.
Shorter, sorry. Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Bridgette Barnes. I represent Stop the Dump, and I represented Stop the Dump during the twenty seventeen through twenty nineteen hearing process. When I prepared this PowerPoint, I was thinking more of a set piece, and now trying to get it down to ten minutes is a little tough, and the staff's review of some of the items is so thorough that I don't want to beat the same point, because we support staff's recommendation in conclusion. Go ahead and turn it. Thank you. The, but I do want to hammer a couple of points if I might. I think I have a background and a history different than some of the members of the council who were not present during the twenty seventeen through twenty nineteen, and I push that because R.I. submitted in late twenty seventeen, there was a significant hue and cry from the public related to their proposal, which includes every one of the requests that are before you now as waivers. All seven were written in their original project plan, and as part of that, were removed during vigorous, that's a polite word for it, vigorous negotiations with the planning commission and me on behalf of my clients. I'm showing you on the next three slides, two, three, four, and five, in July, when the application was submitted in twenty twenty-three, that handwritten statement was what the staff received. Staff then wrote back to them on slides three, four, and five, giving them a list of requests and for clarification, and the answers are part of the answer portion on these items from recycling industries. And what you will see, it is part of your staff report, if you choose to look at it later or in more detail, you may have already looked at it, is summary conclusory answers that did not provide any environmental additional information or public safety, health, or traffic information to the staff. I was notified by staff, I never heard from anyone representing R.I. about the application until yesterday. Mr. Miller was kind enough to call me, that was the first communication I received from the applicant, to discuss any revisions to their proposals or the concerns that staff had raised. Coming back to this, there's a couple of things I would slightly differ with the city's recollection of history. This planning commission voted to approve the design submitted by R.I. exclusively on the idea of it being limited in size from three hundred to one hundred, no packer trucks, only Yuba City and, excuse me, only Yuba County and Sutter County, all of those restrictions were part of the package. However, it was Stop the Dump who appealed, and we appealed because it was a mitigated neg deck, and a MND, as is used in sequel parlance, is the most restrictive form of environmental review. It is of its nature, very limited. So I wanted you to know that as part of that decision, we were prepared to take a writ on the issue. However, we filed our appeal, and our specific concerns had to do with the paucity of the traffic analysis, as already mentioned to you, only on the three intersections, nothing in the county coming in, no air quality analysis at all, no health risk assessment at all. There was no water analysis. I have a list here, let me tell you which page that's on. It's on page seven, if you could switch to it. That's a list in summary form of the objections that we had to the quality of the mitigated neg deck submitted by R.I. at the time. And based on that, the planning commission imposed these restrictions, looked at the environmental data that had been provided to them by R.I. and said, all right, because of these defects, we believe that we can only approve this request for expansion and construction for their permit if you accept these, these restrictions. And then I cite on page eight, the citation to the city of Hayward, which is a twenty fifteen case that requires that if a mitigated negative declaration is going to be used, it must reduce all impacts to insignificant in order to be enforceable. So I, so I appeal it up on behalf of Stop the Dump, and during that two-month period, December of twenty eighteen through January of twenty nineteen, there were meetings that I had with Mr. Mitchell from Mr. Miller's office, and I believe R.I. was on the phone, and your city attorney- from Mr. Miller's office, and I believe RI was on the phone, and your city attorney, and in addition to the restrictions that the planning commission imposed, we also included various language to make sure that those restrictions were enforceable. Based on that, based on Mr. Cunin's, Mr. Dave Cunin's assertion that they would be bound by these conditions, which was put on the record in February 2019, I withdrew my appeal. The City Council was then able to vote to adopt essentially the planning commission's list of restrictions to the permit, plus my language for enforceability, and that was supposed to cover it. I'm just trying to move through on the time, I'm sorry. So to me, there's a double waiver going on here. RI was aware of our environmental objections, and they did not try to challenge those objections or submit any new additional information back in 2019. We waived our ability to litigate and assure the strictest possible enforcement. So now we go to 2023, and this application comes in, and RI did not contact me, they of course sent it to staff, who did send the information to me pursuant to condition 60C, I think it is. However, RI did not respond with any responsive environmental documentation. Now, why is that important? Mr. Libby mentioned why that's important, when you have changes in the environment, but also I wanted you to know that there were many defects in the overall original environmental package that we let go in exchange for these conditions being put in. And those, to reiterate, 100 tons per day max, recycling only from Sutter and Yuba County, no green waste of any sort, a limit on pretentious limits of 10%, no packer trucks, the 499 tire maximum, and no Sunday for hours of operation. So since this has happened, however, there are further, if you go to number 15, there are further environmental impacts. One was already mentioned by Doug, and that is that pursuant to OPR, the LOS standards that were used in the four-page letter analysis prepared by Ken Anderson, may he rest in peace, is no longer permitted. Not only is it not permitted as a statewide matter, but your own city requires the VMT analysis to be done, but RI has not submitted anything to upgrade the traffic analysis for you. As I mentioned before, there was never a health risk assessment, so if the city was considering allowing packer trucks, for example, and the increased queuing from going from 100 to 300 on the streets, you're going to have the emissions from the diesel and the overall parking of the trucks, and no one did a risk assessment on what that does to the nearby businesses or the residences. The traffic study per se is in air quotes only, as I said, it's a four-page analysis. It doesn't qualify as an environmental, for an environmental assessment, but it was acceptable for use for that mitigated neg deck with these restrictions. As I said before, no air quality study was prepared, and then you come to the big one, which is on 16 and 17, which is the road damage issue that the city is now having to address. If you look at number 17, so what we have found is that two major issues came up, and Mr. Libby mentioned them also, the grand jury report that you are familiar with, Sutter Counties, as well as the Sutter County 2021 Truck Analysis, both point to the fact that big trucks with lots of axles cause a disproportionate level of damage to the roadways, both in the city and on the county roads. The ASHTO standards, just to give you some specifics, as an eight-axle semi-truck is the equivalent of 625 cars, okay, in terms of the actual damage to a road. And one garbage truck, 9,000 SUVs, just one, on your roads. So, and I give you the site so that you can check that if you're questioning it. I checked it a couple of different times because I couldn't believe it was that big. They do have the logarithm on the scientific piece, if you want to run the numbers. So in conclusion, I'm trying to get through this in my 10 minutes, and I really appreciate your time. Oh, that's quick. I would, I'm asking you to deny the application and support staff's original recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we can now open the hearing for public comments. Members of the public may speak for three minutes a person. A member of the public who previously requested additional time to speak in Riley's room allowed five minutes. I have one card here, Jeff, you can work your way up if you want. We will start by calling those. Please remember, all comments and questions must be made at the podium. Please state and spell your name for the record. Additionally, please withhold applause or other responses, for every person who is offering a comment can be heard. If you have questions, please direct them to me. Staff can respond to questions after comments have been concluded. If you no longer wish to speak, when your name is called, you do not have to come forward.
And through the mayor, just to remind the public, the podium in the center is for the public.
Yeah. Jeff, the middle one here, buddy.
Thank you.
Or say habit, probably.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I think maybe the chicken issue might be easier than this issue, but I would like to read a statement if you wouldn't mind. So Saylove takes in approximately $15,000 per year of garbage and trash and illegal dumping garbage per year. Volunteers going out to help beautify our Yuba-Sutter community and also help private individuals and property owners deal with the nuisances of this issue. Because of this, our local agencies do not have to apply as many resources dedicated to keeping our area looking good. With the full support of Recology and also Recycling Industries, Saylove could not function as it presently does due to services, does to service the Yuba-Sutter area. Our community is supported well and is better because of both of these organizations. Saylove also has been blessed by this community with some incredible equipment to help in its needs. Being able to use this equipment to the fullest is a benefit for all of us. We have worked well together to achieve some very good results. I look forward to seeing what we can achieve going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sure. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, members of the City Council and other visiting authorities here. My name is Scott Cunin. I'm president of Recycling Industries. I moved to this community over 80 years ago, and I've seen a lot happen here in the, in those good number of years. One of the things that I remember as a youngster was there was always a place here in Yuba City for families to take their own self-haul trash. You clean out the garbage or the whatever, and you had a place to take it. The last place was south of the Yuba City Airport, and that closed in 1985, and since, excuse me, 1965. And since that time for 60 or 70 years, people have had to go clear over to East Marysville to haul their trash away. And for those who didn't want to go clear to Marysville and wait two or three hours in line, what we found was that, and as Jeff Stevens has found, is they drive out into the county where nobody's looking, and they don't think, and they throw off mattresses and tires and wheels and all kinds of stuff, and thus Saylove was born. Now, people don't have that excuse. They can bring that stuff to our particular facility on, excuse me, Epley Drive, and we take it there. And we go through it, take out the recyclables, and we take everything else to a landfill in Wheatland. And that provides people in Yuba City and Sutter County with a place to go for their self-haul trash. At the present time, we work closely with Jeff Stevens and his operation, all the garbage, so to speak, that he picks up off the county roads and streets and whatever, we take and accept it absolutely free. We do not charge him, and we're approaching right now, if you can believe this, what he picks up, about 20, about 20, almost 20 tons a month of material that he brings, he brings to us. Just briefly, in October the 12th, we submitted this, this application, if you say, for a variance for our approval, for our system. From October the 12th until sometime, sometime after October the 12th, until the first part of the year, we began to negotiate the host fees that we pay to the city for all the garbage that we collect and haul to the dumps. And in every one of those negotiations with the city, we approached city staff, and we said, where are we on our amendment? Well, we'll get back to you. And this happened a minimum of four times, I know it's more like five or six. We will get back to you. And we never heard anything from city staff, we were never given the opportunity to discuss these objections with city staff until we received, until we received the letter at the end of April. Quite frankly, I believe that's unfair. I think we should have the opportunity, and we would appreciate on behalf of the council to table this and put it off to another meeting, giving us time to work with city staff and explain their concerns and show how we can take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody else care to speak? Come on forward.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Rigo Diaz. I am the general manager with Recology Yuba-Sutter and also a Yuba City resident. I'm here tonight on behalf of our 140 employee owners to support staff's recommendation of denial for this amendment of the Recycling Industries use permit. Just a few short years ago, the city and the council made a reasoned decision after multiple public hearings with substantial public opposition to approve a mitigated negative declaration for Recycling Industries with 60 conditions. Since then, Recology has acted in good faith to support those decisions by being a good community partner, by allowing Recycling Industries to dump their waste at our dump at Ostrom Road Landfill. I believe allowing Recycling Industries to proceed with this mitigated neg deck and 60 conditions was generous by the city. A mitigated neg deck cannot be substantially modified without additional environmental analysis and study. We agree with staff's recommendation to deny the permit modification because these studies were not performed. As an example, a few years ago, Recology expanded our compost facility at Ostrom Road Landfill in Wheatland. And even though this project was rural, sparsely populated area with no neighboring businesses on the site of an existing landfill, we were still required to perform a full environmental impact review. We thank staff for the recommendation and support to denial of this amendment to the RI use permit. And I would also like to add that Recology Yuba-Sutter is a proud partner with Saylove. We also allow them to dump at our facility at no charge, and we look forward to continuing with that relationship. And I also indicate that it is obviously a further trip for the residents of Yuba City to East Marysville, but I do want to remind everybody that if you are a residential customer of Recology Yuba-Sutter, you get four free dump coupons that you can use to go dump at our facility at no charge. So there is a benefit to having to travel that far in East Marysville. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other member of the public care to comment? This time we can go ahead and allow if Mr. Cunin or Mr. Miller, if you have anything additional to add at this point. You have six minutes, and you know probably by now that's what the beep means. You've never been here before, so I should have told you that ahead of time.
No problem.
All right.
My apologies, Mayor.
And mine too. All right, go ahead.
In rebuttal, I'll just offer a few brief points for council to consider. You know, one of the, one of the concerns, a big concern for Stop the Dump is this lifting, this request to lift the geographical limitation to Sutter and Yuba Counties. Now, Recycling Industries is willing again to talk, to discuss that further and could even leave that limitation in place. The thing is, first off, as the application is written, and it's broad to lift that description, those, we have, Recycling Industries has a non-compete agreement, the inability, they cannot bring in anything and will not bring anything from Sacramento, Placer, Yolo Counties. The only outside of Sutter and Yuba geographical area from which waste is sourced is Calusa and then portions of Butte County. So it's a small amount, and it wouldn't increase truck traffic. And that leads me to my other point. I know that staff has, and Ms. Barnes, raised the issue of the roads, which is an important issue, I understand, and truck traffic. And we really don't believe that the increase in truck traffic with these modified modifications to this application would be detrimental. We believe that the traffic, as it was analyzed in 2019, would still apply, the environmental review, and are willing to discuss and can discuss that further and reach an agreement on that. And then finally, the tons per day, raising of tons per day to 100 to 300, Recycling Industries believes that this, first off, the 2019 SEQA review that was, went into the MND, did study up to 300 tons per day. We understand that 300 tons per day would not realistically be out there available or performed on a daily basis until at least 2030, is my understanding. At the moment, and I believe this point was raised earlier, Recycling Industries only brings in 25% of the 100-ton capacity it currently has. And so there is room to allow for additional, like if the packer truck restriction is lifted or modified as we proposed, it would allow additional waste to be brought on the facility. And then another concern about roads, Recycling Industries is in an industrial area, as council I'm sure knows, and the roads, there is heavy traffic, there is, you know, a, facilities on that road with trucks, heavy trucks, every day. And to the extent that any additional packer trucks would be on that road delivering to Recycling Industries, we believe the, any additional harm to the roads would be minimal. And these are all points that, I mean, this may be new to council, I know we haven't had the opportunity to discuss these with city attorney and with Ms. Barnes before, but I only ask, and Recycling Industries only asks, that we have the opportunity to discuss these because I think we can reach an agreement on this, and I think that it can result in a staff recommendation to approve the application as we can amend it. And I believe that, you know, we're acting in good faith, we're wanting to reach an agreement that is best for everyone. And I just, I appreciate council's time, and I would ask that you consider that, and at a minimum, give us the opportunity maybe to continue this hearing, and we can get this done very quickly. And with that, I will thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions if council has any.
I think we're good. Oh, yes, we do. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you for that. Does, does, does RI accept city's estimation that they're going through 22 tons per day?
I believe it.
If you could step to the microphone in the back.
We're gonna go, yeah, if we're gonna go any further than that, we'll need to have you step up to the podium.
May I? Tiffany, you can come up. If that's okay with council. May I have her address?
The cancer I can handle, but this is getting a little longer, so we should do that this way.
Okay. My apologies, if you could.
Thank you, council. My name is Tiffany Schneider. I'm the newly, newly appointed COO for Recycling Industries. So in answer to your question, we're doing about 25 tons a day. It is increasing significantly, I think, is the weather, and the community is becoming- It is increasing significantly, I think, is the weather and the community is becoming more aware of, of what we're doing. I also wanted to kind of say too, that we are in a very populated industrial industry. And I live in that area. I live four minutes from it. So we have semis coming up and down the road every single day. You know what? I also wanted to extend an apology to Stop the Dump. I think that she is owed an apology just to the fact that we were kind of in the same situation of being not notified that other requests were going to be requested from the planning department. Otherwise, I would love to reach out to you and have discussions if, if that's something that would make it better for the community as well.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
Okay, let's see here where we are. Staff, anything else to add by chance? Nothing? All right. Council questions for staff?
Just a, just a quick one, Mr. Libby. Are there any prohibitions for, for reapplication?
Can you say that again?
Sure. So assuming that perhaps we as a council choose to deny this, is there any prohibitions to them regrouping and reapplying?
Yes, the, the municipal code has a requirement that should the council deny, that they would be prohibited from filing a new application for six months.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the mayor, if I may piggyback on that, there is an exception if the city council approves or approves the resolution or denies, I'm so sorry, long night, denies the project without prejudice. And that language is actually in the resolution before you this evening, which means that you're basically saying, we don't have enough evidence at this time, we're denying the project, but it's without prejudice for you to bring it back at any time. Thank you.
So that would in effect waive the six-month waiting period?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Nothing? All right.
Just comments.
No?
Just comments.
Okay. All right, let me see here. Now we'll bring it back to council for comments, deliberation, and a motion.
Through the mayor, just to be clear, the public hearing has been closed.
Yes, and public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank both Mr. Miller, Ms. Barnes, Mr. Libby, Mr. Kuhn, and Mr. Stevens for their comments this evening. Let me break a few things down. Number one, we do value Saylove and certainly they have made an important contribution to cleanliness within our community. And as I understand it, this would not prohibit, if, if it was to be denied, this wouldn't prohibit Saylove from continuing to use that facility because they can still, people can still drop stuff off there, it just can't be more than the, the 100 tons. Now, as it relates to Daisy, that's not permitted now anyway, so I, I don't see where that's, that's much of an issue unless they're using Daisy, and that's probably another discussion for another day. So I, I, like I said, I appreciate Saylove quite a bit and support them and have supported them and will continue to support them. I, I think that, I try to break things down to, to its most simple, and one of those is I as one do not really, really, I'm not fond of negotiating at the dais. Things come up, assertions are made, both sides, this happened, this didn't happen. And for me, that it just becomes extremely problematic. It seems like it's something that happens in society a lot now where people, one, one side will tell you one thing, someone else will tell you something else, and then you're kind of figuring out, okay, well, I know these people, I'm just at a loss to figure out what it is. So I try to break it down to this. There was, and I was here in 2018, elected, newly, newly seated in 2019, and remember the very loud and very passionate opposition to, in favor of Stop the Dump and against recycling. So I cannot remove that from my memory. That, that was there. There was a lot of public outcry and that was taken into consideration for this initial, for their initial agreement. So when it comes to trying to change that, that's there, but it's also now there's some new, new things going on, one of those being the vehicle miles traveled, right? So I can't hardly sit back and say, hmm, you know, things were pretty much the same when they really aren't. So again, breaking it down, trying to be simple is, it's, it seems to me that, that rather than sit back, kick the can down the road again, which is something I am personally against doing, it would be better to consider at this particular point in time anyway, that RI regroup and reapply. That way they can get their ducks in a row. We certainly hear what your frustrations are in regards to whether or not you got information, but it sounds like we didn't get information either. And so to me, this, a reasonable thing rather than, okay, let's just continue this thing for a little bit longer and maybe we can negotiate something is come back to, come back through an application process, do what's needed to be done, given the current law, and then, then, then we can reconsider it. Again, it is good to have an option like recycling industries offers, Yuba City residents, to, to get rid of waste here locally. And I do also acknowledge that people are using that and it sounds like maybe they're using it more often. And that's not a bad thing. I'm just not in favor of increasing anything at this time based upon, based upon the new laws, but probably as much is if there's anything that fills my email box right now, it's roads. And to sit back and say, well, we're not going to really increase trips, we've got a big problem. In fact, our, our presentation to the community shows Garden Highway as the road that is, is most heavily impacted right now. And there's no way in the world if we increase this thing, you know, I'm no engineer, but I don't think I'm stupid either, that, that increased traffic isn't going to further, you know, compromise that roadway there on Garden Highway. So anyway, I'll reserve my motion until, till the rest of the council has an opportunity to weigh in, but I'm not in favor of, of a continuance. I will go ahead and mention that.
Through the mayor. Councilman Baumgartner put it in very succinct terms. I don't like negotiating an application after it's been submitted. You've got an application, you submitted it, now you're trying to renegotiate it. I see no evidence that's been brought here tonight to change what was said in 2019. And I am not in favor of kicking the can down the road either, and that's all I have to say.
Through the mayor. It is 2024, and I tell you, the last few months has really seemed like 2018, 2019 all over again. And to my colleague, we went through that, we lived it, and there was a huge outcry from the residents. And there's a reason that these locations such as what Recology has is out in East Marysville, it's away from residential neighborhoods, period. There's a reason that those terms were all negotiated back in 2019 and it was to protect the neighborhoods. Yes, it's in an industrial area, but a good quarterback can almost throw it from RI and hit the houses across Garden Highway because it's really not that far. And I, I don't know about you, but I just watched the news recently and there was a, it was a simple, it was some kind of yard that had pallets in it down in the Tracy Triangle, and it was close to homes. And they were evacuating people and having to let it burned out. That's the concern. And when this application comes forward, you know, we're only at 25%, and this is what's been presented tonight, 25% of your current allowance. The first need that we may have coming forward is still six years away, possibly 2030. And all those safeguards were put into place. The packer trucks, I agree, we've got roads that we gotta go fix and we want to limit packer trucks, we want to limit semis from traveling and damaging the roads. And what's gone on with the weather the last year has just utterly crippled some of our roads. And we've got to go bond out money and we got to fix it. We can't add to the problem on that. The fear that I had in 2019 that gravely concerns me tonight is, just had the feel of just waiting for the next opportunity to come back in and, and change things. That's why the condition was put in that, that no planning commission is going to come back to the city council because we watched it polarize the community, you know? And Mr. Stevens, Saylove does a lot for the community, I really appreciate it. It still hasn't stopped the dumping around, you guys are just picking it up and getting rid of it for us, and I, I really appreciate it. But as it was pointed out, you can take even Daisy out to East Marysville, you can't take Daisy to Epley, but you can take Daisy out to East Marysville, you can take it out to Ostrom Road and get rid of the stuff. I know that it is at zero cost to Saylove because both organizations are allowing you to do it. So while we love Saylove and appreciate you coming and speaking that what you feel is correct, it has no bearing on what we're doing here tonight because there's no impact to Saylove at all. Because whether you go to Epley or whether you go to East Marysville, you're doing a community service and both of these organizations are giving back to a community service. So with that, I'll, I'll reserve my final decision until we come back, but if this application is denied tonight, my personal opinion, and, and Mr. Libby, I'm not going to put yourself or Mr. Moody on the spot, but I can only guess the hundreds and hundreds of hours that staff combined have put into this and the taxpayers' dollars that in my opinion possibly have been wasted to get here tonight when we don't have everything that we need to really do it. So if at some point in the future, if this is denied and RI wants to bring it back, you need to go get a full EIR that was pointed out earlier. You can't willy-nilly around this and expect to get any changes. You really need to justify why the changes are needed and why it's good for the community. Because right now with all the conditions standing, we're protecting the community and you got exactly what you negotiated just a little over three and a half, four years ago. So with that, I'll conclude my thoughts and turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Through the mayor. So as, as someone who, who wasn't here in 18 and, and lived through it, I had to ask a lot of questions. And I've, and I've done that with, with city staff and, and community members. And as, as somebody who's taken advantage of RI for my recycling and, and, and dropping things off, whether they've been personal or through Saylove, I appreciate the amenity. But going from 25 tons a day to 300 is a jump. And that's what I'm really having a, a difficult time wrapping my head around. And I don't want to be repetitive to a lot of things that's already been said, but I, I will hold my, my verdict to the end of it. So thank you.
That's the problem with going last or next to last is that people already said the good stuff. I, I agree with everything that's been said. I primarily break it down to a matter of protocol. We do not, I think it's bad form to negotiate terms this way. The application as it stands has a lot of challenges. I think it would be appropriate to, to deny tonight and then move forward with a fresh application with everything already addressed. We talked, it was mentioned that things could be done quickly. A new EIR, which is required apparently, and traffic state does not happen quickly. We don't want to have that looming out there. So if there's options and there is a desire to come for another bite at the apple, if you will, for this, for this amendment, I think the appropriate way, protocol wise only, if, if no other reason, would be to deny tonight and then move forward with, given opportunity for a fresh application. I, I agree with Mr. Kirchner here that, I'm not sure what the need would be, if there's no demand for, you know, you don't, it's not like you're at 95, 99 a day and suddenly need to bump it up. I'm not sure where, where that motive comes from. It really doesn't even matter, it just, it just strikes me as odd to, to request, to have that as part of the request. But pretty much give my, what my opinion is, but I think just a matter of procedure, the cleanest way to do it is to get a fresh start and come back again, if desired. So, do we have any other comments or a motion?
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Yuba City, denying an amendment to use permit 1705 and development plan 1703. Based upon the findings contained in the resolution, recycling industries, which is located at 140 Epley Drive, Ancestrals Parcel 54083026. Second.
First and a second, to adopt staff's recommendation, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Okay. Staff's recommendation moves forward. Moving on to item number 23, boat, trailer, RV parking ordinance update. Doug Libby, you're up.
On to the next. So I wanted to recognize and thank our code enforcement staff who stayed tonight, Eric Ball and Boone Bragdon, who are here to just be available for this and, you know, should the council have any questions, but, you know, they put in a full day and, and here they are because they think it's important. So thank them for taking the time. Okay, so this next item, zoning code amendment, ZZ 2301, boat, trailer, RV parking in residential areas, it's something that the council has seen before. You're considering an amendment to the municipal code to revise our existing standards. Now, this issue was discussed at, in 2023 at city council workshops, as well as the council unanimously initiated the amendment in October of last year. The planning commission considered the matter on December 13th, recommend approval of the ordinance. They recommended one additional standard be incorporated in the ordinance, and I will cover that in just a moment. As I've touched on before, the question of where to allow parking of these items can be controversial. We have citizens equally passionate on each side. Some citizens want a desire to keep a boat, trailer, or RV at their home to minimize storage costs and have ready access to it. You have others on the other side of the issue who believe that having them there in their front yard creates a cluttered aesthetic and reduce property values. Parking of these items is not uncommon though, when you look across the city, you're going to see, you know, more in certain neighborhoods than in others. The standards being considered apply to private property. The street and highways code applies to the parking units within the public right-of-way. So today, if you want to have a boat, trailer, RV, it must be parked behind the wall of a residence facing a street and provide screening. So typically what we see is you have a lot that's of a sufficient size that you could park it in the side yard and you have the front fence that kind of screens it. So this is what code enforcement sees out in the wild today. These are some more fresh photos. You'll see like this, this particular example, you have one, two, three, four, five, five units parked in the front yard. This one, you have, you know, three with some other debris. These are other out of compliance images. I think you've seen these before. And then here's what compliance currently looks like. So what does revised standards, what do they really look like? So we're not looking at, it's important to keep in mind that most lots created today don't provide, they have a 20-foot setback from back of sidewalk to the garage. And so if you're going to park something in the front, you're probably going to, when you look at the tongue and the unit itself, you're probably looking at something 15, 16 feet. And so you're not talking about large fifth wheels in most situations. So the proposed standards would establish new definitions for recreational vehicle and utility trailer. It would generally allow the parking of a single boat, utility trailer, or RV in a front yard area. Parking areas would be developed in a similar standard as the existing driveway, so if you have as the existing driveway. So if you have a concrete driveway, you would have to have a concrete parking area for your unit you wish to park. Strip driveways utilizing concrete, asphalt, or pavers may be utilized under each wheel from the road to the parking area. If you're going to put in a new driveway, you're going to have to get an encroachment permit. New parking areas, you can't run the stormwater off onto your neighbor. Got to be a good neighbor. Parking areas must take place in front of an existing garage or front side yard area and not in front of the homes living or what we call habitable area. A parked RV or utility trailer or boat must be set back a minimum of 12 inches from the back of sidewalk or edge of the public right-of-way and cannot be artificially raised or angled to meet the requirement. This next one is what the planning commission recommended adding, is one of these units exceeding eight feet in height must be set back a minimum of five feet from the adjoining side yard property line. You could have some situations where front side yard area where a unit could be upwards of 10, 11 feet. And based upon public comment that we received, it was like, eh, that's a little bit too close. We'd like a little bit of a setback. And so the planning commission agreed with that and they thought that five foot was an appropriate setback. These units can't exceed 12 feet in total height. Utility connections are to be temporary for servicing only up to seven days. Covers shall be fitted in good order and untorn, and it's important, no tarps. Parking area shall not create sight distance hazard to neighboring property owners. When you have a lot that's .3 of an acre, greater than .3 of an acre, alternative parking locations and servicing could be considered by the director. And if you have, by chance, a lot that's a half acre, a second unit could be stored on the front yard area and alternative parking locations and servicing could be considered by the director. Any parking area must be maintained consistent with the city's nuisance code. What that means is you can't allow trash to accumulate under the unit. You can't have weeds, things of that nature. An existing fence providing screening of a side or rear yard area cannot be removed to accommodate a larger unit. So if you have your front, your side yard is blocked view from their fence, you can't take that down in order to allow a 40-foot unit to be put in there. So how did we do public outreach? We mailed notice of the planning commission and the city council hearings was provided to citizens known to code enforcement to be interested in the issue. We also published in the newspaper 10 days prior to the planning commission and the city council meeting. So environmental review, we believe that this qualifies for a exemption under Section 15061B3 of the California Environmental Quality Act because the revisions merely provide refinements to the existing allowed uses for additional clarity regarding the standards for the parking of these units on existing residential property. It could be also considered exempt by 15301 existing facilities. This amendment could potentially result in minor alterations involving negligible or no expansion of residential use at existing homes. In order to make a change to the municipal code, with zoning, we have to make certain findings. These are laid out here with responses, proposed responses in the ordinance before you tonight. The recommendation, conduct a public hearing, introduce an ordinance of the city council, finding the project is exempt from environmental review, and approve zoning code amendment 2301, revising our municipal code regarding the parking standards of boats, utility trailers, and RVs in residential areas, and waive the first reading. That will conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will go ahead and open the public hearing for the boat, trailer, RV parking ordinance update, which is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public rushing to the podium? All right, we'll go ahead and close the hearing. And for action, we do have to read the entire thing.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Libby, I'm trying to put my, wrap my brain around the setback. So a big RV is bigger than eight feet tall, right? Usually, some of those monsters that are out there? So if I'm parking that in a side yard, I need to be at least five feet away from the fence?
So you've got to keep in mind that the proposed standards are an alternative to our existing standards. So the existing standard today, if you can park it in your side yard next to your house, back behind the fence, you're good.
No problem.
No problem.
Okay.
But if you're going to be in the front yard area and you're over eight feet, then you're going to need to set back five feet.
Appreciate clarification. Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Libby, you said about habitable area. People have propensity in the city to change their garages to habitable area. So does that remove that parking for, because it states in this that it has to be uninhabitable area adjacent, correct?
Yes. Yes, it would.
So what we're proposing is, once you take, once you take that garage out of being a garage, you make it habitable space, then you've eliminated your opportunity to park utility boat and such.
Yes, but I think it's important to keep in mind, so typically in a single-family home, your attached garage provides your two required parking spaces. So when you take, remove that as an option, really, your front yard, your driveway going into your property is your parking, is your two required parking spaces are going to be there. And so, yeah, we would definitely discourage it because you need some parking for your home.
Okay. Thank you. That's all. All right. Any other comment? We still have the motion on the table.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce an ordinance to the city council, the City of Yuba City, amending regulations for the parking of boats, trailers, and recreational vehicles in one and two family residential districts by title only and waive the first reading and approve exemptions pursuant to SEQA guidelines, Section 15061B3 and 15301 is existing facilities.
Second.
I have a first and second to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? None. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Libby. Appreciate it. Item number 24, city-county cooperative agreement for fiscal year 2324 Sutter County
Okay. This is a good partnership item here before you. And so there's a little history. We've done these in the past where the city and the county share roadways. And so on the city's border, in the past, when we annexed property, we went to the center line of the road. And we've, we've kind of learned over time through LAFCO and through coordination with the, which is maintaining that, it's not a great idea. And so when you see future annexations, we take the whole road and then that way we clearly know who's responsible for the road. And so, so we have some of these out there and unfortunately they get into this area where they kind of get neglect because whose road is it? What's the timing? How do you coordinate it with it? And so the city and the county have been making an effort over the last decade, five years or so to, when they have a project that we coordinate. So, and recently comes to mind on Franklin Road, when the city did those improvements, it was a city-led project, but a portion of it was the county. We worked through a cooperative agreement. And so the county took the lead with some roads. So they reached out a year or so ago and they said, hey, we have a project on our plan. Would you like to partner? And so staff worked with them and they identified three roads that we'd like to partner with. And so it's Harding Avenue from Franklin to Cherry Street, a section of Vernon, a small, short section of Vernon, just east of Little John, and then Bog Road on Sanborn to Walton. If anybody's driven those roadways, they're in pretty rough shape. And so, so with this, the city's looking to partner with them, do real improvements where there's going to be some digouts. So it's not just an overlay that falls apart soon thereafter. It's going to be some structural improvements and then an overlay. So it's going to be repaved and done. And so with that, how the structure of the agreement works is there's an estimate for these line items, how many tons of asphalt they need, or how many square feet of digouts. And they've put an estimate together, and that's about $400,000 of this total. The county has a big project. They're going to do roads out in Sutter and across the county. But of this portion that we're sharing with them, it's about, it's estimated 400,000, and then you have some contingency that's put in there. The project has not bid yet. And so the way the agreement is structured is that it's based on the actual bids received for the lowest responsive bidder when it comes in. We've looked at their estimates. We're comfortable that we think they're coming in with what we're seeing in prices, that it's going to be in that ballpark. But we recommend that it's to move forward because it's really a win for city staff and for the community because the city doesn't have to manage, design, and manage, and put out a separate project. We're really going to pay our line item at the lowest bid at this point in time, and then as coordinated work, so the project comes together and has a cleaner finish. And so with that, we're recommending a resolution authorizing execution of a cooperative agreement with the county of Sutter for the roadway and roadway component improvements associated with their fiscal year 2324 Sutter County Overlay Project. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Through the mayor. So sorry.
Oh, public comment?
Thank you.
You think after eight years I'd figure that part out? Public comment? Okay, we're approved then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 25, Josh, coming up for PD Evidence Storage Building.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. I'm Josh Wolfe, senior civil engineer with the Public Works Department. Tonight, I've come to talk to you about the Police Department Evidence Storage Building contract award. Here's just a quick exhibit of what the storage building is going to look like. A little bit of background on this project. In 2017, the project to expand the Police Department was approved. And then in 2019, the project was actually constructed to expand the Police Department. In the original plans, we had anticipated that the evidence building for the Police Department would be a future improvement. So as time went on, December of 2023, the council approved plan specs and estimate for the Police Department Evidence Building. And then March of this year, we advertised the project for bid. A little bit of information regarding the building itself. It's a 40-by-60 insulated steel structure that is going to be climate-controlled. It will have four automatic roll-up doors, two personnel doors, electrical panels and lighting, interior chain-link fence with rolling gate to meet compliance for chain of custody and security of the evidence, and perimeter hardscaping for access and ADA accessibility. We advertised the project for bid March of this year. Bids were opened about a month later in April. After a review of the bids, Frank Webb Construction was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder at a bid amount of $797,110.89. After a review of the bids, we do believe that this is competitive pricing, and we do recommend that we do not go back for additional rebidding just due to the nature of inflation. Prices for materials are increasing, and we do not believe we're going to get a lower price for this. If we do move forward, construction management and general inspection would be performed by city staff. With this being an emergency facility, special inspections are required. So staff will be performing a request for proposals to retain a qualified special inspection firm for those items. For the fiscal impact, the total project cost is $925,000, that being composed of a 10% contingency for unforeseen items, change orders that come up during construction regularly. Additionally, the Police Department has made it clear that storage racking will be necessary to properly store and organize evidence. So we want to make sure that there's ample funding to ensure that can be installed concurrently with this project and not at a later time with increased cost. Additionally, we are requesting a 6% construction management and inspection fund. This will fund staff, project management, and inspection, and also the aforementioned special inspection that's required by the state. For the funding, there's currently $770,000 available in the Police Evidence CIP account. Part of that funding is from state grants, the COPS grant, and also the suspended traffic offender program. And lastly, the American Rescue Plan Act. In order to bridge the shortfall of $155,000, we're requesting that council make a supplemental appropriation of $155,000 to bring the account balance to 925 and allow us to fully build the construction project. With that, I'd recommend that council adopt a resolution to make the following actions: awarding a construction contract to Frank Webb Construction Incorporated of Wheatland, California, in the amount of their total base bid of $797,110, or $797,110.89, adopting a SEQA Class 3 categorical exemption, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract on behalf of the city attorney, subject to review and approval as to legal form by the city attorney, and authorizing the finance director to make a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $155,000 from unallocated general funds to CIP account number 901278, Police Department Evidence Storage Building. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good. Nope. Any public comment? Thank you. Last item, I finally got it. Nothing. So we get time for a motion.
Through the mayor, move to approve Police Department Evidence Storage Building at 1545 Poole, Yuba City, California, contract award. Do I need to read A, B, and C?
Just say, yeah, staff recommendation or A, B, and C. That's all you've got to do.
That is correct.
All right.
Second.
And a second. Shannon, you're okay with that? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Yes, sir. I did. Yes. Thank you. Number 26, future agenda items, opportunity to discuss with city manager about items came up in the meeting this evening that you'd like to have brought back to council at a later date.
Through the mayor. I'd like to see the electrified fence ordinance thing brought forward.
Okay. Any member from the public here to comment on anything? All right. Any other recommendations brought forward? Nope. Okay. And we'll move on to city manager's report.
All right. Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate Community Services, Josh, on completing the bocce ball courts at Sam Brandon Park. I know that there's still a little bit of work to be completed, but fantastic project. Also, I saw completed pictures today for the new playground equipment at Shanghai Garden Park. It looks amazing. And I know that we will have a ribbon cutting later this month, but I imagine the residents, and if you don't live in that area, you should go down there and check it out because it looks, it looks like a lot of fun. We have a mayor's bus tour scheduled for May 20th, and I believe that the registration will be opening soon for people to sign up. It's open. Ashley said it's open now. Already have 15 people registered, and we have 20 spaces, right? All right. So it's going quickly. And then just to note that we have, at our June 4th council meeting, we're using that meeting as our budget study session. And so the majority of the time will be dedicated to the budget. And then the May 21st meeting, the upcoming meeting, we do have a lot of agenda items. So similar to tonight, I would expect to be a fairly long meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boom Garden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attended a, at the invite of the Beal Military Liaison Council, a recent civic leader tour to Lackland Air Force Base as well as Randolph Air Force Base. A lot to unpack there. Be happy to share it to you offline. Probably the biggest thing for me is it just hits home that, you know, we have this thing called Beal that's just outside of our area that is generating lots of dollars. You can get all kinds of different economical impact numbers for that. And it just seems to me that on these trips, we keep continuing to get hit home about how important it is to retain this space and do what we can to do that. Things like, you know, transportation were brought up, things like discounts for airmen who may be struggling out there. And this goes back to an to an old graduate school of mine. You know, we spent a fair amount of money trying to attract businesses to Yuba City. And I think it's equally important, as if not more important, to try to make sure that we spend an effort to retain those things rather than, than chase the ring, if you will. And so, for me, a slight shift after going to a couple of these is, let's, let's, let's take a look at what we can do for Beal out there as a city that we're not already doing. I, I think it would be well worth any time, money, or effort spent. Second trip was to Cap to Cap. Went as part of the region's Public Safety Committee, had an opportunity to interact with various electeds, fire chiefs, police chiefs, and other emergency responders as we lobbied Congresswoman Doris Matsui, Congressman John Guaramendi, Congressman Doug Lamalfa, Congressman Ami Barra, for things that were important to our region, predominantly infrastructure money. Everyone is struggling, like we are, with taking care of old buildings, old fire stations, old police stations. And so, we made very, I think, good pleas and got some very, very good information back about support for funding for those, those facilities, including, you know, even perhaps our, some of our fire stations and the police station. Other than that, always happy to attend the citizens' police, the Citizens Academy. 16 graduates, I think there were. Very enthusiastic crowd. Also attended the volunteer recognition along with the rest of you. Again, 77,830 bucks and some change in in-kind services provided this year or this past year. But some of the hours that these volunteers have spent, I think the, the winner was 6,000 hours or something like that, that this person has donated to our cities. Incredible to me and such a valuable resource. And finally, always pleased to attend the senior commission meetings. To my friends in the senior commission, I appreciate the invite, and I appreciate the exchange of information back and forth. You guys are doing great things, and we'll see you at the United Way Resource Fair, if I understand correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep this brief. I would like to note, mention it. It's nice to have the band back together. It's, it's been a while. So, it's kind of cool. Really, the only thing was going on the last couple of weeks committee-wise was transit. We're taking a look at the, the budget for 2025, but the big announcement was, that came through SECOG, was the balance of 10.3 million came through. And so, they, they are made whole, which is huge if you are in the transit world. And so, at some point, hopefully soon, they're going to be, starting with the construction of the facility out there, and lend us a kudos. That's a huge one. I, I would like to mention that I thought the city did a great job on our community signs out here on the corner of 20 and Stabler. I saw them putting those up yesterday, so great job on that. And then, finally, speaking of SECOG, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, May is Bike Month, Month. And I looked on the website today, and out of organizations of 200 to 500 employees, Yuba City's ranked third, which is pretty cool, a third out of 29. So, that's pretty cool. And that's, that's my report.
Mr. Pesquale. Thank you, mayor. Attended my Air Quality Control Board Finance and Policy Committee that I'm on. We went over the financial reports, and proud to say that they are within budget and have not spent money they don't have. Also attended the Citizen Academy graduation, which was great. See that many people interested in finding out about our police department and such. Did, that's, I commend you, chief. That's, that's a great program. Also went to the volunteer presentations. Amazing the amount of hours. I was just in my little pea brain figuring out 77,000 this year over a 10-year period. That's almost a million dollars, three-quarters of a million dollars that we've gotten for people stepping up, which is great. It's great to see volunteerism in our community, which will make us great, is which Mr. Stevens does. And I, I recommend, I commend anybody that steps up and does that. Don't want to put a damper on the Lackland trip. It was great. Councilman Boomgartner said that he sees me in pictures, and I'm all smiles, and I was. It was great to see, and I stated before, the amount of young people that are willing to put their lives on the line. However, I was at the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation meeting on Monday or Tuesday, I think. When was it? Friday. Okay, Friday. And there was Mr. Pacheco there from Grumman, yeah, North Grumman. And he's put a word of caution to us. Beal is very vital to our defense, but personnel are going to dwindle dramatically. And so, and the big rub was, why did you take away our gate? That that's diverting people away. Well, we have to look at this. He laid these numbers out. We're not, they're really not diverting that many people now away from us. And that's just a reality of what's going on out at the base. And we have to maybe reinvent ourselves as well as the, the base. So with that, I will conclude my report. Thank you.
Vice mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be brief. To the Beal item, they, he's been talking about that for a couple of years, and it has been dwindling. And Beal is re-changing its mission a little bit over time, but you have to start looking at things that the global hawk has been reassigned up into Dakotas. You've got the U2 that's eventually going to be phased out. So, Beal will have another vital but different mission coming up in the future. The leaders out there have shared that with us. But, to Mark's point, and Beal has a special place in several of our hearts up here, because I was stationed there. You were a military brat, if I can call you that. And we all just love what's, what's, what Beal stands for and the people that serve. We have to continue to reach in. We have to continue to draw those people here. We have the, one of the largest concentrations of retirees, veterans here in our community, well over 4,400. And we need to let them know that this is home, and they're welcome, and everything we can do to support Beal. Off that soapbox. Attended the same things that these guys did, the Citizens Academy graduation, and the VIP ceremony. And, you know, those people that serve in the VIP program cannot say thank you enough to you. And they are a neat group, as we know, because both of our wives serve in, in that group. And my wife chose to go to the Citizens Academy, chief, and then you guys accepted her as a VIP. And it was her way of giving back to the community. While I'm giving back here, she can do her own giving back. And she thoroughly enjoys it, and it's, it's a dynamic group. So, kudos to, to all of them. Transit's already been covered. RWMA, we met, and then we met a second time, because the biggest news out of RWMA is the executive director has resigned and taken a job with a different agency. So, we're going to be reinventing that and looking at options for executive director management, and possibly a new executive director. And so, news of that will be forthcoming very soon. But that's the big takeaway there. The other is, everybody knows in November, we have the SEEK Festival and Seek Parade. The mayor and myself have been assigned to the ad hoc committee, and we've been meeting with them, sharing the concerns, so that fellow council members know the concerns that came out of last year's and the year before, and the year before's festival's been going on for all these years. We had a, a good meeting with a group of about 10 or 12 of them, and we will continue that. So it's not a one and done. I know the mayor and I are determined on seeing this thing through and making it a success for all parties involved. Not to put words in your mouth, but we are, aren't we?
Oh, yeah.
So, so that's where we stand there. So, I'm sure the council will get updates through our city manager. But we have begun those, and I believe the city will be starting somewhere in the next month or so, really engaging with the leadership at the temple to, to get that dialed in. So, that's great there. And the one fun thing is a little restaurant called Wayback Burger. We were there on Saturday in the rain, luckily inside. Didn't have the burger, but I had the fries, and I can tell you, they were great because they were fresh. So, wish them the best of luck. Thank you, sir.
All right. Well, a lot of it just got disappeared out here. I, too, went to Cap to Cap with Councilmember Boomgarden. I was on the Civic Amenities Subcommittee, which was a, this year, the theme was repurposing open spaces. They, among other things, they showed us an example of they had a abandoned sports stadium with a huge parking lot. They couldn't figure out what to do with it, and they, someone had the idea, we need more fields, soccer fields and whatnot for the kids. And so, they repurposed the big parking lot, at least part of it, for that. It was next to a, a outdoor preserve. So that was a good example, the, where they navigated through all that and how the multiple owners that they still have to deal with. Also took advantage of the opportunity to be in Washington, DC, and scheduled a meeting with Rails to Trails folks in an effort to, I met with James, who was here earlier today, from SECOG and some of his staff, in an effort to strategize our anticipated conversations with Union Pacific Railroad, and who are apparently challenging to work with. And so, we want to try to do the best we can to come at them and have a, a productive conversation, and hopefully work a deal of some sort to eventually acquire the right-of-way for the much-talked-about bike path from out to Sutter all the way to Bridge and Plumas over the Trestle and Amerisville and beyond. So that's, we're working on that. Did an interview at Fox 40 in the morning recently, got to talk very briefly, it goes by so fast, about four minutes, about all, all the good things happening in our city. One of which, of course, is, and Diana, thank you for the information. Ashley, thank you for the email. The Department of Finance recently released information that Yuba City is the 10th fastest-growing city in California with a population over 30,000 people, a 1.8% increase. So that's, to be, make that list is very impressive. So, the work that everyone is doing out there is definitely being noticed and is paying off. At their invitation, I met with Staff Sergeant Ellis of the US Army here in Yuba City at their recruiting center. He was from here, and so, he wanted to reach out and introduce himself. He's been here about a month, so I had a good conversation with those gentlemen, and definitely appreciate their service. They plan on becoming more of a visible presence at different, at various city events. I refer them to the city's website and, along with the DBA and Chamber of Commerce and others. As our city manager mentioned, she and I did an interview on 93Q Radio, and once again, got to talk about the city and information surrounding our upcoming anticipated potential revenue measure. Sasa Board of Directors was fairly routine. They continue to do a lot of work, and money, of course, is an issue, but they do a great work over there for our community, not only just Yuba City, but Sutter County and Lebook as well. Vice mayor, I mentioned, we've been meeting with the Seek Temple, trying to get in front of some issues and lessons learned from last year and years prior. I think it's the first time we've started meeting so early, and I'm really happy to know that they have been agreeable to that. So, we had an interesting, I guess that's the word, meeting, first meeting with them, and we anticipate probably many more, to try to get this thing run as smoothly and primarily as safely as possible come November. And I, too, attended the Yuba City PD Citizens Academy graduation and the Senior Volunteer Awards, 77,000-plus dollars in time donated is nothing short of impressive. And so, those, those are great people. And the Citizens Academy, same thing. Educate themselves, take time out of there to learn about our city, learn about the police department is, is outstanding. For as far as the Land Use National Resources Committee and SECOG, we continue to work on the upcoming impending blueprint, which is basically MTPSES, which is basically saying, this is our mission, this is our priorities, this is how we're going to move forward. And so, there's been a lot of negotiation, in my opinion, way too much talking about, about that. So, we're trying to get that squared away, come to an agreement, and voting on it fairly soon. And then, we, of course, we get to a list of prioritizing projects and getting those in order, and then how the funding round moves forward. And thank you, sir, for participating in the Funding Round Working Group. That being said, unless anybody has anything, do we have any public comment? For what? Oh, yeah. Yeah. All right. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.